We'll both have to call them being ordered. Once I get the okay from the back that we're good, all right. So we will be using a new agenda format tonight. So we'll kind of go through some steps as we move through the agenda. We'll talk about some items that will be recurring but won't always be on there. But this starts us off with a new start of acknowledging who's here and that we have forum, and it looks like we do. And we've got the last board member coming in. And so the first item then is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Beerbomb, seconded by DeWort. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, that passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the high school track and bleacher improvements project. And this did not require any sign up. I will open the public hearing, and if anyone is here to speak on that issue, you can come to the mic up front. I'll give a minute. Anyone here for the public hearing? Yeah.
I'm going to get our potential.
Oh.
There's no comments.
Yeah, if there's no comments, then yeah, we would have you to answer questions if we needed, but thank you for coming.
I'll answer questions.
And I love, no, well-prepared for said questions. Okay, I also just will make note that I didn't receive any email or other communications commenting on the public forum and the high school track and bleacher project. So I will close the public hearing, and we will move to our celebrations and recognitions. And for that, I will go to Director Lashman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have two celebrations this evening. So we are proud to recognize the student group chef and their faculty sponsor, Colin Riker, for their incredible work in partnering with ISU's George Washington Carver Hunger Fighters Project. Through their efforts, high school teams are writing compelling essays addressing hunger-related challenges in our community. Thanks to their dedication and advocacy, the Ames CSD has received a $10,000 donation to help reduce unpaid school lunch balances for Ames High students. This is an inspiring example of students making a meaningful impact in their community. Thank you to chef, Mr. Riker. If you'd please stand up, I know you're here. And we have a representative from ISU Hunger Fighters as well. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to this important cause.
Yes, thank you. And then our next item.
And second, we are celebrating one of our fifth grade classes here in the district. For Alexis Estes, a fifth grade teacher at Sawyer Elementary with a passion for fitness and inspiring her students, the decision to participate in this year's Hy-Vee Kids Fit Challenge came naturally. Her class tracked how many minutes they moved each day for five days. Their dedication paid off as over five days, the class racked up more than 10,000 minutes of physical activity. The Hy-Vee Kids Fit Challenge wasn't just a fitness competition, it was a master class in life skills. Students learned about the value of teamwork, perseverance, and the joy of achieving a shared goal. Many students already had experience with collaboration through extracurricular activities, but this challenge took their teamwork to new heights. They encouraged one another, celebrated milestones, and stepped out of their comfort zones to try new activities. Their reward? The opportunity to perform at the Iowa State University men's basketball game halftime show. Was anybody there? It was a great performance. Winning the Hy-Vee Kids Fit Challenge was more than just a trophy or a halftime performance. It was a reminder that fitness can be fun, that challenges can unite us, and that every small step contributes to something greater. For our amazing teacher, this journey exemplifies why she teaches. Watching my students come together, grow, and achieve something incredible is the greatest reward, is what she shared. If you all can stand up that participated, we want to congratulate you on your hard work.
Yes, thank you and congratulations as well. We will, and you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you don't have to. I always like to give the pass, you know. So we'll move into our public forum. I'll read our statement on public forums. Residents of the district, students attending the district, parents or guardians of students attending the district, the district staff members, wow, I'm botting this one today, and district staff members may address the board about any topic relevant to the district, whether on the current agenda or not. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker participation is limited to three minutes, once per item. The views and opinions of citizens addressing the board do not necessarily reflect those of the board, district administration, or staff. Speakers are to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. Student speakers will state their name and school, others will state their name and address. And I did not have anyone sign up.
David.
Oh, David?
Yeah.
All right, so can I have David first? Yes. And then I've got one on Zoom as well. Looks like.
Hello, I'm Dean Schmitz. I'm the food service director with Chartwells for the school district of Ames. I'm here as part of Chartwells and the 36 employees that are employed at all the schools here in Ames. I'm here to personally thank you for your leadership and commitment to the schools and students of Ames. It is School Board Appreciation Month, and we do and see what you guys all do, so I thank you for that. Also, as part of the appreciation, I've made some cheesecakes with Barry Capote over here for you guys to snack on. Our executive chef, Jessica King, made those today. So, and there's extras, so you guys can, you know, rock papers. But everybody up there has one, so I just want to thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we definitely appreciate the treat. They're all mine. The board president gets to distribute them as she sees fit.
They're already gone.
I don't think that's how democracy works.
Yeah, you're too close.
And then on Zoom, it looks like I have Michelle Riker. Are they, nope, okay. Then I will close our public forum, and we will move to our consent agenda. This part of our meeting looks pretty close to the same, except you'll notice that we've moved gifts out of this, out of the consent agenda. So can I get a motion?
I move approval as presented.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Beerbomb, seconded by Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes 7-0. And then we will move to a new section, which are our reports. And I'm going to hand this over to Superintendent Grimes to walk us through these new thoughts and what we will hear tonight or hear in the future.
Yeah, the goal of this, the conversation through work session, as well as some of our use of work session, from what I understand, and also being more transparent, communicate items out to the district and community. We will have sections that will be presenting items under each month. Building level presentations, eventually we'll have building principals in for buildings. All directors will be presenting during this time. Another example is if Chartwells was going to come and present on cheesecake, they would fit under a building level presentation and not under public forum. If we were to have an architect come that wanted to speak on anything that's a new business, I typically would have them speak during the building level presentations or other presentations so that they may not have to journey through the whole aspect of the board meeting. So building level presentations, we do not have a calendar set up yet, but I did want the board to know and the public to know that this would be where they can hear some feedback of things going on within the district from buildings and departments. This will also be done only at the second board meeting, or what we're going to call it a larger board meeting of the month, which will be the next board meeting. This meeting, we have all the areas just to have a conversation and get an idea of what the areas are. The next one would be associate superintendent. He will be reporting, or they will be reporting each month based on what curriculum or changes in student services, reporting to the state. A lot of the things that you hear through the board updates or even throughout the school year in the board calendar, you'll find will fit under the area of associate superintendent. If there is a specialty area, for example, he may report on some of the items under special ed, but if there's a large presentation on special ed, we would then bring the director in to have that conversation versus the associate superintendent. The other area would be then superintendent. You'll have a common items that will be presented under the superintendent. One currently is the review of the agenda template, which we'll just do throughout the process of the day. Enrollment, you'll have a conversation, or I'll be presenting about enrollment each board meeting. This will be from here on out. I presented this for the last 17 years at my other previous districts, but I had enrollment in front of the board at every board meeting throughout the school year. I will also have staffing on the board meetings. Not every month, staffing usually starts around November and then continues through the hiring season and ends in June. And then will be brought up if there's certain staffing situations that we need to have a conversation about hiring or budgetary in those situations. Reminder that staffing does not mean we're talking about any specific staffing person or individual. That is not a board level item, but just wanted that to be clear. And then gifts to the districts, other things you'll have on here. I typically will fill in on facilities, facility committees will go under me. A lot of other items you'll see will start to go under the superintendent, things from the state, legislation. We'll work alongside with the chief financial officer, and things will be related. So those three areas, associate superintendent, building level presentations, associate superintendent, superintendent and chief financial officer, the board will receive most of the information that they need to make decisions in the new or at a later time if there's more conversation had. So a lot of the stuff that I'll be talking about, like gifts to the district today, I'll read under me. You will take action on a new business. If there's any major staffing changes upon hiring, those will either be under new business or under consent agenda at the next board meeting. Any questions on those? I'm just really down to D, and then I'll go through my items after that.
I'll just add to kind of echo what we had talked about in the work session is that I think this new format will, kind of having the reports, will make sure that there's more information at the board table, particularly that's relevant to our board level decisions, and maybe mean that we need less in terms of work sessions because we'll be looking, we'll be getting regular reports as opposed to, you know, one work session where we dive deeper. Not, I mean, we'll still have work sessions, but hopefully this gets more of the conversation at the table. I'll hand it back to you.
So are we actually going to talk through, like, say, are we coming to staffing now or have we?
I'm going to go to enrollment.
Oh, okay.
Because that would be the order.
Oh, okay, so, no, I got it.
Yeah, so we'll jump back up to, yeah.
So the enrollment document, it's probably easier if you just put the document up. The enrollment tool that you have in front of you is the beginning of the enrollment tool that'll be brought each month. Each month, you will have a actual for the current school year and then also projected. There'll be added more features to this document as it continues to grow with information that the board will find relevant to review as well as understand how possible staffing decisions are being made with class sizes, coming down to supports in the buildings, and sometimes it just comes down to conversations around each of the buildings, class sizes, sections currently, board goal, class sizes. Currently, I just put in what was typically used in the past. My previous, previously, I would bring board class size recommendations to the board annually and have a discussion on what the board, one, their preference of what class sizes should be, and then also what financially we can do with those class sizes when it comes down to supports. Within this tracking, or really the enrollment document, I also keep track of the February, or November 1st to November 1st. So eventually, I'll be producing a trend line that has the last 10 years of enrollment on it, and it will also go out to future enrollment. I also have a end-of-the-year enrollment to the following year enrollment. This is a different document that's not being shared yet or is not completed yet. And if you were to take this document in front of you, I actually have gone back to the last 10 years and filled this document out for myself so that I can see trend lines, class sizes by building, section sizes, staffing numbers. And then eventually, we'll be building that for myself and internal use for, I will have special ed staff in each building, related arts in each building, sharing of sections within each building, Title I in each building, other resources allocated to each building. Those are staffing decisions that typically is done internally with a conversation presented to the board. I do know that every building has its unique characteristics, it has its unique staff, its unique students and population, and we need to make sure that we are focused on that as a district. I'm fully aware, as I went through the process at previous districts, that some buildings do need different allocations to provide supports for those students. That is a hard conversation to the other buildings, but those are conversations I'm already starting to have within our district. The other piece in there is the total number of students in the building, number of teachers in the building. So you will be able to see as it changes what was last year's numbers in that building, how many staff were in that building, teacher certified teaching, and then how that changed to this year. This year will be updated. I tend to update this weekly in my own document. That's how quickly I monitor staff development throughout the end of the school year. A lot of decisions that I've ever made have been based on this data and shared with the board through this document. I've shared this board, I mean, the full document is really an Excel spreadsheet that I have. I really don't share it. I really feel there's a lot of details in there that would benefit the district as a whole, but sometimes it's hard to have conversations around in smaller groups. The red, eventually, I will have pink and blue in here. Pink shows that there's a grade that needs to increase from, let's say you have a grade that's three sections this year and meeker, and next year it's a four section needs to be recommended. There'll be a pink in that will show the board already where there needs to be an increase of a grade level, and there'll also be blue throughout this, which will actually show that there should be a decrease of a staff in that grade in that building for next year. Please understand that once those numbers, those colors start getting presented monthly, that already shows the board kind of an idea of what staffing, if you were looking at budgetary-wise, what staffing is over or under when it comes down to each elementary. If I were to give you an idea for the last few years, what I have seen and what I have projected, if I were to go back, we may be overstaffed to elementary throughout the whole district. There's a net gain and a net negative when it comes down to staffing, and the board will be able to see visually that this is a decrease of so many staff or this is an increase of so many staff just based off moving numbers to the next school year. Some examples for that to happen is sometimes your third grade class sizes. Right now, your board goal is sitting at first grade at 25. If you were to move that to the second grade and your board goal's 27, you may be able to meet the needs of that grade to the next, the following school year. Another piece of that is I'll start placing open enrollment for next year on the side. That'll give you an indication of the number of open enrollment by grade that still needs placed within the district. And so that is also a way that we can help balance out classes in certain buildings or the buildings throughout the enrollment process. I do not take enrollment or class sizes as an individual within the district very lightly. I understand that we are talking about, you know, the challenge that we have is to sit with a budget from year to year, use our dollars as best for the goals that the board has, as well as knowing that individuals can read this document as they would like to read to benefit certain things. I just want you to know that more details and conversations around this will happen at each board meeting. And the red right now, let's just go through some of the color coding. I have, the board goals is blue because I really think the board needs to have a conversation around those numbers. They don't align with my own philosophy, but budgetary-wise, it might be what's best for the district. Edwards, when you look at, say, the red numbers, that means that's just a dropdown for kindergarten, but we will not have indication of kindergarten numbers until we have kindergarten registration. That'll start to change throughout between now and actually probably June or July.
Sorry, can I, can I ask, so on what basis? That's a big thing. I don't understand. How are you getting those numbers right now for the projections for kindergarten next year?
I don't have them, that's why it's red.
Oh, okay, so it's just the numbers from this year?
Yeah, it's 60, well, it looks like one already changed already.
Yeah, there's like a few that change.
It should be 68, the same number. 72 should be, should be 75, but the dropdown.
Okay, I see.
I can correct those red numbers.
Okay, so the numbers are supposed to be just the same.
Everything else should be carried down.
I see, okay.
So if it was 68 in kindergarten this year, I just put 68 in first grade next year.
Okay.
Those will be updated. As the numbers in actual are typed in, it automatically carries down. So you can see throughout the remainder of the year how the numbers change from month to month and towards the end of the school year. Any questions on the elementary page?
Oh, yeah, also, can you tell me how you got the, I actually don't remember where the numbers for the board goals came from? Do we, when did we define these?
I don't recall ever having done that either.
No, you haven't. I'm just going to answer that question for you. These are the numbers that have been used in the past, so I think that the board needs to have a better conversation around board goals and class sizes and based on budgetary and what we can handle, based on the money coming from the state as well as, you know, I know we want smaller class sizes the best we can, and the class sizes should grow as the grades go up, but with our financial situation and everything, we have to consider class size compared to what dollars we have. The other side of that is, is if we have a larger class size, for example, let's say second grade right now at Mitchell, second grade at Mitchell right now has always been red in my mind because we have 51 students, two teachers, and 25 to 26 per class. Right now, we also have a full-time classroom teacher's aide that is with that section just to help those teachers out because adding another section to that, if you do the math and divide it, will move it down to like 15 or 14, 15, 16, or 17. So there are other ways that we can support classrooms, and right now, there was a need there, and we put a teacher's aide in that section just to help those two teachers out.
The blue is your suggestions or?
I haven't put any of the colors in yet. The blue is just, the blue, board goal, one blue is kind of what someone told me, that's what it's been forever, so I just put it there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, I think at some point I had asked.
It was a goal that somebody set along with you.
Yeah, I don't know that it was a board goal or.
No, I'm sorry, the board goal is there because that's what I used the past few years, so I just thought, well, you should have a board goal there.
Yes, okay.
But I think this is how the district has operated.
With that being a goal?
Typically, the board, I've always taken the board goal for class sizes to the board in March. And I'll be honest, once they're set, it's very hard. I can come back to the board and tell you, if you want to reduce class sizes, I can tell you how much it's going to cost you to do it. And that's what I've done for a number of years, if you're just going to look at class There's a lot of detail in this document, and you probably should have gave you maybe a heads up because this is a very public document, but it's also a document that I think people need to understand the board and that the, and myself and the staff are using to ensure that we're at least meeting the board goals and understanding what we have in each building based on sections and sizes.
Will this document then be the place that you put, for example, effectively the maximum number of kids that should be in any building or maximum number of sections so we can see, like, you know, for example, one of the elementaries, I'm pretty sure, is pretty close to 100%?
Yeah, the number that's not in there yet is the total classrooms. So if you look under Edwards, you have the 436. Underneath that, I'll be placing the max number for that building. I went off of previous numbers from RSP, and I'm not currently aligned with his numbers that were presented to the district on class size and building sizes. So I will be looking at each building because I've done that before, based on number of classrooms. Then I look at board goals, class sizes. I typically just go with a straight number of 25 per class, which then helps with the smaller classes in your lower grades and some of the larger classes that averages out to 25 per section will be the number that I will throw in there depending on the, but you're right, I will start placing, let's say, a building is close to capacity, then I start to place colors in those, those numbers. So what you'll see is if a class is, well, I'll start to add colors. You'll have yellow, which means this is right on the edge of where it, board goal is. Red is they are at it or they're just slightly going to be over it. And please understand that most of the time when I have conversations with the grade level or a building, they would prefer to take a little larger class sizes, class size, rather than breaking up the kids and having them go to not their home building. So you'll see yellow, you'll see reds, and you'll see blues and pinks, is usually all the colors I will use within this document. It's a very telling document because you start to see, let's say, I mean, simply, you had Edwards went down 11 students from last year, Fellows went down 23, Meeker went down six, Mitchell went up 27, Sawyer went down 10, Northwood went down nine. This is all information that you probably only hear about once, but now you're going to see it monthly. And the whole elementary last year went down 32 from 23, 24. I'm just going to say, there's a lot of detail in this, and I'm not trying, I have, my brain just works this way, and it's just best for the board to have the information up front.
I'll request that maybe you add a legend for color coding.
Yeah.
But I think a lot, I mean, I like this kind of data. I think there's several of us that do, but I'll just say to the board, I know this is a lot to digest, but since we will see it regularly, if you have questions about it, like something specific, can email me and Scott, or, you know, we'll have opportunities to talk more about it as well. But, you know, if there's any big questions or concerns, let me know, and we can work through that because there is a lot of information.
If you go back to a previous district and you go back the 12 years, you'll see this document have been used in that district for, still being used to this day. Any other questions? Sorry, I've been turning that way more. The next one is the secondary. The next one is the secondary. This is only a straight number. Eventually, I may be able to get a number of teachers that works with sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, but right now, I do not have that number set up. It's taken a while to get those. The challenge with secondary, middle school as well as high schools, your schedule ties into your classes and the number that can be used within a building as well. I do believe the capacity and whether that's accurate or not, I think the capacity at the high school is 1,600 students. I mean, I believe that was with the new school, but I will double check to see what the capacity of that is.
That sounds right.
And the middle school capacity is 1,200. Those are just rough estimates. I mean, I wouldn't say rough, but I do know that when you get anywhere near secondary, close to your capacity, you start to feel it before. I keep trying to scroll with my finger and I, you know. Also, want to fill in here, these numbers are, the elementary, it's seats, it's kids in seats, so this does not count our open enrolled out students, it does not count our homeschool assisted students. I believe the high school numbers do count our homeschool assistance students. So when we're talking about enrollment in our high school, that 1,400, 1,502 at the high school does include our homeschool assistant program students onsite. We are working to pull those out, so I do have our enrollment person, she is providing me, she's, every time I'm asking for the document, she's pulling those numbers out, at least in the elementary. High school, it's a little bit more difficult to put those numbers and pull out because there's a lot of coexistence where they may be in for other things, but homeschool for certain classes. So when you look at down, like, let's say, the total served down 22 for next year at secondary, and we look like we're only down six, our certified enrollment is different than our in-seat enrollment, so I want to make sure we don't start to mix them, but I will definitely present those differently.
How do the, I know we have grade sharing with like United. Are those accounted for in here?
Those are not in here.
Not in here, okay.
I took everything out of the elementary to ensure that we're looking at our students sitting in our classrooms with our teachers. That is a new dynamic for me that I'm moving on. I did not have homeschool assistant program at a previous district, and nor did I have any sharing with a previous district. So I know that those things go into, is new learning for me up here. It doesn't affect, I think, the ultimate focus of what the board is in enrollment and providing services to our students and ensuring that our buildings are getting the resources they need based on their need.
I have a question in general. So I just calculated the average. So our average class size at the elementary level is 324. Our average class size in secondary is, I don't know, I haven't calculated that, but it's probably closer to like 365 or 370. Is there a reason that our average class size is so much higher at secondary than at elementary?
Because those class sizes include homeschool assistant program students.
Ah.
And United.
Okay.
Whereas the ones below elementary just has our in-seat here. I have a different document that will kind of give us an indication of our full class Also, our private sector come over secondary for some of those numbers as well.
Private sector come over secondary?
They have to, there's no private at secondary level, so they come to our schools.
So they may go to a elementary.
I see, okay, right.
Looks good. If you could add more details, it'd be great. I'm actually all for more details.
Maybe less gray?
More orange.
I could do that.
I just want to note that Erin's first comment is of our members, maybe more.
Just, I mean, it should be Ames orange, you know, title?
Yeah.
Well, the cost of printing color is a lot, and I use every resource in the district the best it's needed.
Good answer.
All right, so shall we move to staffing?
Yeah.
This one's shorter.
So staffing received 10 applications for early retirement. Those are between, they're listed below, the positions certified as well as other supports within our district. Of those vacancy, we discussed, discussed about having early retirement and having the timeline so we can start to post and begin filling positions as we see fit. Right now, of those postings, I'm recommending, we'll be posting a high school PE teacher for replacement of the resignation as well as a head school, high school head football coach. Those should be posted tomorrow. Other positions that are vacated due to early retirement, we have two success teachers, those would be reading specialists or Title I, sixth grade language arts teacher, homeschool assistance program teacher, a counselor, two high school administrative assistants, and an accounting specialist.
And those are positions that either you are trying to work, figure out staffing or think you can post them later for some other reason?
Correct.
Okay.
And that anytime we have resignations that I'm aware of, this is where I'll bring them to the board and at least give you an update on what the resignations are and how that could impact, or when we're going to post those positions. Another document that will come under here down the road will be a tab document. We'll have every resignation in the district. It will take, it'll let you know, kind of an indication whether it's filled internally through a transfer or whether that will be hired externally and who that replacement is. So you'll have an ongoing tab of the staffing between now and June that will come to the board each month. What it's really doing is taking your consent agenda approvals and just kind of putting it in one document so that you don't have to try to build your own document every month on your resignations. And I do know there's people out there that do enjoy doing that, but I'll provide that to the board so that you have an indication of the updates on those.
Okay.
And it'll say things like filled, held, not replaced. We still have a language arts teacher or, I want to say, a secondary, I'm going to say language art, not language arts, foreign language at our high school that should be on here and would be an example where I would say we have an open foreign language position at the high school. We were unable to fill, so we will continue to try to fill that for next year. This is also where I will probably be recommending our district office staffing, and we'll be presenting next month where we're looking at for some of our interim positions and the direction I would like us to move at least for next year. That'll be staffing at the next board meeting. Any questions on staffing?
Gifts to the district.
I told you these board meetings are going to get a little longer. Gifts to the district. Would like to thank everybody that has donated to the district. We talked about earlier, we have a $10,000 cash donation from Iowa State University for the Lunch Hero program. Amcor Rigid Plastics, they donated a bunch of winter clothes with about the value of $4,000 for our Hope Pantry. We have an anonymous donation of $3,000 cash, might be too anonymous for 3,000 Lunch Hero program. Judy Yuland has a $2,500 cash. It's in honor of Tyler and Sarah Witty, sorry, in honor of Tyler and Sarah Witty at the Lunch Hero program. We have $1,000 cash from Ellen Price for the Hope Pantry, $100 cash from Wayne and Karen Klaber Lunch Hero program, $100 cash anonymous from seventh grade, for seventh grade Sheldon classroom, $50 cash John and Renee Moeen of the Stonebrook community for the Hope Pantry, $50 cash for Dallas Rust of the Stonebrook community, Hope Pantry, and $25 cash from Elizabeth and Joseph Klein of the Stonebrook community for the Hope Pantry as well. Want to thank everybody for their donations, and this was a large number of donations. I do know that we had other donations within the district that can be presented at different times with some good dollar values as well. Recommendation will be to approve those at the new business. That'll be a change.
All right, thank you. Do we have anything from the CFO today? Okay.
Do not.
You don't have a really complicated spreadsheet?
I do not today, but I will be coming with one.
Yay! Anything from our student representatives today? All right, and then anything from board members? We're all just getting back into the swing of school, right?
I guess just thanks Scott for reworking the agenda. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move next to old business, of which there is none. So new business, first item is gifts to the district.
Move the board approve the gifts to the district as presented.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, it's moved by Beerbomb, seconded by Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, passes seven zero. Next, we have the resolution adopting the Story County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I move the board approve the resolution adopting the Story County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, it was moved by DeWort, seconded by Beerbomb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes seven zero. High School Track and Bleacher Improvement Project.
I move the board approve the bids and award contracts to Hinkle Construction Company in the amount of $2,424,241 for the project's base bid and alternative packages one and two.
Second.
Any discussion?
It couldn't have been one more dollar?
No. Don't, we need every dollar.
It's great.
We need every dollar.
Two, four, two, four.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor for approval of the high school track, it's been by Beerbomb, seconded by Shields Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes seven zero. Almost forgot myself. We had a little bit of a break. And then our next item, now we've kind of moved what used to be requests for staff to the separate item, which we will call for request for superintendent as we want, you know, things to go through superintendent grimes, and this will be kind of in the future if we have requests that come up during presentations, anything where we would want staff to spend some time, we'll ask there.
So like the legend today?
Yeah, so the item is, can you give us a legend for your color coding? Thank you.
Once colors are attached, yes.
Okay, well, there are colors on there, red and blue, so.
Pink won't work, go for orange. At all.
Now, we don't need to get into the week about what colors.
It's governance, okay, sorry.
It is PowerPoint, but I will save that as an example in future handbooks.
I mean, you could have a vote. I propose a vote.
Nope, don't say that, we don't need to.
No seconds.
So we will move to our board planning calendar, and it's taking a minute for it to load. Our next meeting is January 27th at 5:30. I believe we have a field trip planned for that one too, right? Is that our, is that when we're visiting the Ames Center?
Yes, we'll go to the Ames Center after the meeting.
Yes. And since we'll all be together, that's kind of a...
For those that want to attend.
Yeah.
So it will, so the meeting will continue?
We will have the meeting here, and then basically the Ames Center is the work session.
Okay.
But we'll go, we'll drive over there, but since we will all be together, we need a public meeting, and it would obviously be open.
And then we'll close the session at the Ames Center. We won't have to come back here to close it.
That's a good question. Is that right, Sheri?
Yes.
We can close it there?
Yes.
Okay.
We might have to come back here to close it. Oh, no, sorry.
No, Sheri said no.
Okay.
I think it's just a closed session where we have to come back to the main room to close it.
Yeah, as long as it's open the whole time, it should be fine.
And Sheri's our expert on our rules, so.
Okay, so I'm not an expert, but I do know that.
I'm going to call you that. All right, so next meeting, January 27th.
So one question here, just as we're doing the agenda and cleaning up the agenda, which is awesome, will the board planning calendar then be synced up with, I mean, I think it looks like it is, or maybe it's being cleaned up a little bit, but so that we can kind of see a month or two out when Scott's going to bring certain items.
Yeah.
I know we kind of fell off that for a few years, but that could be really nice.
Yeah.
Cool.
So then we, next item is our closed, our closed session for our superintendent mid-year check-in.
I move the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual has requested a closed session.
This is a, oh, go ahead.
Second.
And this is a roll call vote, correct? Do you want to call it or do you want me to call it?
I don't know, I can call it. I had, because I had to rework it, you know?
Oh, yeah.
DeWort?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Shields Cook?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Winfrey?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Beerbomb?
Aye.
All right, so we will move to closed session in conference room C, is that correct? Yes?
Grab your cheesecake.
And you can grab your cheesecake, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll put the rest of them in that refrigerator in there if you guys want more, but I don't want to really sit in there. It's a smart idea. But Jessica was really proud of mine.